Well, he didn't want to have to.
Your girls, both your girls play basketball?
Yeah, uh, basketball and first year was basketball. There's three of them, well, you don't know why they voted against it. I mean, who knows what they're reading tomorrow.
I guess the playoffs start next week or something like that.
Yeah.
What grades?
Second and fifth. Yeah, second.
Harry's retired.
Absolutely.
So it even might affect.
I don't know if the season starts.
Are they letting some seniors?
Yes.
Oh, God.
I just got one from seventeen.
I thought I saw that.
Yeah.
Everybody know about senior.
He is.
You thinking about schools yet?
Yeah, he's still kinda, he's got some opportunities to play football, but we're kinda. You know, I'll tell you, the transfer portal is when kids in his position where he's not like top division one prospect. Things, it's got, you know, a bunch of little schools looking at him.
Like in major issues, yeah.
They kind of stay in state where that limit's where you're going and then. And Billy's nephew is going to Mercer to play football.
That's very positive.
But the coach there was a buddy that is a friend of mine, I went to college with, and he's leaving, going to Navy. So I don't know, is Pierce is still going to Mercer?
Yeah, no, I'm bullish about it.
Uh, yeah.
Did the coach change?
I know. Right, thank you.
Oh, he left it.
Wow.
Offense is more than a name.
Larry, Larry has talked about his screen son several times and.
For position. He played tight end, but he's probably gonna be more of a receiver, but he's not, he's not quite big enough to be a tight end.
Did he run?
Six-two, about two-hundred.
Can he run?
Yeah, he, he had a really good year this year. Broke his leg last year in the middle of the season, which really hurt him. But he started as a sophomore too. Why the hell did I open up my agenda?
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. So we're gonna call an order, our special work session on February first. Uh, we have a short agenda item here, but have a couple of items here. And, uh, the first order is a discussion of events related zoning items. As you know, we have been discussing these items, we currently have an advance on new residential, um, development. We discussed at the end of the year, some changes to our zoning ordinance and our zoning map. And, uh, we'd had a public hearing on that at the, back in December. We had a lot of public input on that. And we extended the, the bands, uh, to, we could have an opportunity with the new council to discuss these items in greater detail. So that's what we're here to do today, to discuss this, um, and, um, get everyone on the same page. And, uh, determine how best to proceed at this point, so. Mr. Peppers, how would we like to proceed on, at this point?
Maybe the best thing would be, uh, if, if Mr. Green might give us kind of just an overall of what was proposed, at the, at the public hearing part. Um, as you know, there were several changes to the development code, that weren't necessarily tied to residential, and it seemed like the biggest issues that we got feedback on from the residents were some of the residential pieces. So maybe if, if council can understand the non-residential part, and have agreement on that, then we can get into the residential part for more discussion if that makes.
Sounds good. Mr. Green?
As Mr. Pepper said, there were several items that were more or less housekeeping items on the proposal. One of them, let's see here. Number eight was amend table one oh-three dash one buffer types by zoning district. We were amending that to delete the zoning categories in the table that was proposed to be deleted overall. Chapter one oh-five development code administration of the UDC is amended to change all references to Board of Zoning Appeals, to Board of Appeals. There are several places in there where that was kind of going back and forth, or the name of the variance board. There was one section in the, um, table of permitted uses that allowed townhomes, and that had to be amended to go from P to C for conditional, because they typically are more than, uh, there are three or more attached units, so they require a conditional use permit. In the way that the table currently reads, it just says P, that they are a permitted use. The bulk of the rest of those, of the proposed changes, all had to do with zoning districts to delete numerous ones and combine those into a single R-ten district. It would also delete the neighborhood commercial zoning district. We only have two parcels in town that is zoned that. Those two parcels are out on Hickory Flat Highway, that would go to general commercial. We were getting rid of the O R T. O R T, it is yet to be determined which of those properties would go to straight O and I, office and institutional, or a residential zoning. As Mr. Pepper said during the public hearing, there was a lot of discussion as to the potential of people going from an R forty zoning down to R ten. The number of houses that, that could be built on the property along with an accessory living unit might increase the density of certain areas. I hate to use the word exponentially, but it would increase them in some areas. Other properties would see a decrease into what they could have. So, and, Mr. Mary, as you said, we've extended the advance to give the new council members a better chance to understand what we were looking for last year and to come up with a solution to what we have, uh, proposed so far. Uh, Mr. Dyer's office come up with the ordinance, I thought it was a very thorough one, where they made reference to all the categories and which ones needed to be deleted and which ones needed to be combined.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe a little bit of background on a couple of those. O R T has always been a tricky one for staff, because it's supposed to be transitional between traditional neighborhood and commercial. The problem is, there's so many different things that are allowed. A neighboring property may not know that there's going to be a change from what's residential to commercial, or from commercial back to residential because of the allowed uses in that table. And it might hopscotch, you might have, you might have a residential property that's O R T, and then another property that goes commercial, and then you have another residential property. You may have a collection of residential properties that now are going into almost multi-family by the number of units, but they're being put in as duplexes, which were allowed. And so it, it just changes kind of the consistency of a, of a residential area. Because of the way that, that section of the code was written, you know, there was very little that the staff could do, except for maybe encourage people to do a rezoning to a different category, uh, so that it was clear they were going commercial, or clear that they were going to a specific type of residential. But most developers didn't want to do that, they just wanted to go completely with what they thought that they could go towards, um, under the table.
Yeah, there are several places along Marriott Road where it's O R T. Mr. Pepper's alluded to that, uh, certain developers have gone in and built the duplex units without having to go through the CUP process. And at one time, there was no density restriction, and we amended the code probably a little over a year ago to assign them, I think it's eight dwelling units per acre, whereas before, there was not a limit.
And on the, on the commercial side, were there any changes in the, any of the commercial categories?
Well, we, we do have a couple of neighborhood commercial properties. The, the problem is, there's not a whole lot of difference between neighborhood commercial and general commercial as it relates to use it. And so, you know, I think, I think if you are a property owner and you're adjacent to neighborhood commercial, you kind of have in your mind a friendlier use than maybe a service station or, or, or something like that. Didn't we have an issue with the one up near Park Village? It was general commercial, though.
We had a annexation and rezoning request, uh, to, to be annexed into the city to be general commercial.
That's right.
And he wanted to put in a, a convenience store service station. And the annexation was denied, so therefore the rezoning, you know, became moot. The only two properties in town that are right now zoned neighborhood commercial are two parcels on Hickory Flat Highway on the right-hand side, as you're going out of town toward the interstate. And if memory serves me correctly, they're, they are either vacant, or there is a single-family home on one, if not both of them. So they are not being utilized as neighborhood commercial.
And they're certainly on Hickory Flat Highway going out of town, they're certainly not what you would consider to be walkable. You know, they're not, to me, neighborhood commercial means that it's kind of internal to a neighborhood, you know.
Right.
With the, uh, the difference in the neighborhood and the general commercial, if everything's general commercial, and I, I'm fine with really getting rid of the O R T for sure. I guess my question would be, is if a convenience store does want to come in somewhere where there's a very highly populated, you know, houses, are we gonna be able to put restrictions on how late they're open? You know, that, that would be my only concern, is having something that's, that's twenty-four hours and, and it being next to, you know, a residential subdivision, whether it be townhomes or apartments, it's still, you know, that would be, that's always my understanding of the neighborhood commercial, is to be that sort of buffer between residential and, and, you know, and the other commercial.
Right, and so what, what we have found, and I think it's the county's experience as well as our experience in the cities, is when somebody wants, there's always this, we're between neighborhood commercial and general commercial. And so which do you zone it? And I've always thought it's better to zone it general commercial and restrict the uses. So you can be general commercial, but you can't do these. So you can be general commercial, but you can't be a gas station, you can't be, and you would just, that's how you would deal with it. Because neighborhood commercial is just a little bit problematic, because it allows almost everything. And, and, and it's, is designed to be part of, it sort of came about with these planned communities, where they were setting aside some commercial, and they said, but it's only this kind of commercial. Well, now it's this piece of property, that piece of property, that piece of property, and, and so it's, it's a cleaner thing, and I think gives you more control. Because somebody's got to come for rezoning, and you can say, we don't like that, we don't like that, you know.
May I ask, Mr. Dyer, if you, upon these commercial, uh, conditions on the general commercial, would that be of the whole ordinance to apply to everything, or we would be case by case?
If somebody asks for rezoning, you would say, we're okay with you being general commercial, but we don't want that use, that use, that, there's a handful.
And then in another circumstance, we could, uh, make different conditions.
Or let them up, let it be just general commercial, which would allow anything.
Sounds real good.
So there's probably not a whole lot of general commercial in the city that's near subdivisions. I mean, uh, what are the plan, planned developments don't have separate zoning for their commercially planned pods, do they?
No, they just have like a master plan.
They're just the master plan.
And then each pod has been designated a certain use.
They have listed uses, so they're already, they've already done what I'm talking about. They've said, these are the things that are allowed. The O R T, I, I don't, make, make sure you heard this clearly. We need you to just, to decide if we were eliminate O R T, O R T, are we gonna give them a residential zoning or commercial zoning? Because most of the things that are O R T are commercial at this point, right?
Either commercial, or like I said, on, on Marriott Road, the bulk of those are single-family homes now, other than what Aladimer has developed.
So you may say those could just be commercial, or, or you could say the ones that are residential stay residential. The, the difficulty with O R T was, it had some listed, the idea was, well, this is a transitional area. Well, these are the only kinds of things we're gonna allow in this transitional area. And then developers were coming, or just people wanting to open a business would say, well, I'm like that. We were constantly having to decide, well, is this herb shop like whatever we allowed here? Or is this pharmacy like a herb shop, which was allowed? I can't remember exact cir- circumstance, but, so that's why the staff wants to eliminate it. It's not really functioning well, and it's probably way past its usefulness. When we were worried about Marriott Highway being, or Marriott, Marriott Road being that transitional area, it may be beyond that now. But that, that is a decision that we need you to make if we eliminate it. What do we give them?
Does that have a recommendation whether to go residential or commercial?
We haven't got that far into it yet, but I would almost think that anything that is currently residential would be designated as residential, and whatever is an, an office or commercial use would get either the general commercial or the O and I office institutional designation. Another spot where there's a lot of O R T is back behind the old hospital. And behind where the old hospital used to be, there are a lot of, um, office or commercial uses, and they're zoned O R T. So that, you know, the obvious and easy thing there would make them be, to either be office or, uh, general commercial.
So you would, you would propose just changing them to their use?
Yes, sir.
To match the zoning to their use. So that's whatever the, the property is currently, you just change it to that use.
Correct.
And if they wanted to change going forward, they just would have to apply for rezoning.
Correct.
And at that point, at least the neighboring property owners would know that it's going a specific, it's not kind of in that hybrid land where it can be either or.
So currently, they, their neighbor wouldn't, they wouldn't have to apply for rezoning if they were going to switch uses.
Right, so you could buy a single-family residential house, and the person could buy the lot, the house that's beside you that served as a residential unit for fifty years and put a business in it, and you wouldn't know about it.
To be fair, that's the point of the O R T zoning, was for that to happen. That was the idea, is we don't know what this is gonna be, and so both things are allowed. That was, that was the intent of it. And, and, but it's, I think the intent of it originally was that it would be office uses. Then, but we said, but, you know, we'll let this retail come. We, being the city at the time, and then it was just everybody saying, well, I'm like that retail, let me do this, let me do this, let me, so.
What kind of, as Mr. Dyer was saying, that, you know, the, the, the T part of the designation is transition, and was trying to, you know, step down from, from residential out on one side, and the closer you've got more into town, then it would be more appropriate to have office uses. Another thing, those properties that are currently used as a residential, uh, use, a zoning designation would have to be, uh, specified for them, which are four, R-ten, R-twenty. Don't know if you want that to be left at the staff level. Certainly would. Any proposed zoning on there would need to lend itself to be compatible with other residential, strictly residential districts that are in the nearby area.
Yes.
Mr. Green, if, if, if you're in the O R T and you, you have a residential home, what is the den, if, if you have a home, it's just a single-family residential on a half an acre, is, is, what's the, what can the density be on that? Or do they have to come before council to have it?
No, we, uh, we amended that if someone wants to change that lot to a, a duplex development. Again, like Aladimer's have done up and down through there, it is now eight dwelling units to the acre. So if they got half an acre.
That'd be a concern, I guess, if somebody came in that didn't know any better, bought the house next door, thinking that's their single-family home. You know, I guess whoever, you know, they better do their research to make sure they, they gotta realize their neighbor could be an eight-unit duplex, or their other neighbor could be an office, or, you know, that's just kind of, it is what it is, that's the zoning, but I know there will be, you know, you'll have that come up.
Yes.
And then, but if we go, if we give it an R, a, R-eight, then they'll know.
Right.
At the zoning map, that's, I think that's the staff's point, is let's just call it what we want it to be, rather than this misleading O R T thing, that nobody understands.
And that, that was another amendment that we talked about, was eliminating the R-A-six, which is residential attached, six units to the acre, and simply having one R-A-eight residential attached, eight units to the acre.
And almost all of the property that surrounds O R T bypass back towards Hickory Flat Highway is R-A-six.
Which we're, we're going to R-eight. The proposal is to make all of those R-A-eight, and eliminate R-A-six. So they would be grandfathered for whatever rules they have.
They would be grandfathered what they currently have, the ones.
Correct, if they, if there was actually six, I mean, if there were actually six units on a property, they would be allowed to continue under the non-conforming use rules.
And what about the area behind the old hospital now, currently, what is that?
If you're, if you're in the old Mill Village, like Juniper and the, the ABC Streets, most of that is R-A-six. Most everything else on Hospital Road is O-R-T, O-I. And then you get into R-M fifteen, where the Housing Authority property's at, and.
It's another, a market rate apartment complex.
Would we look at treating those areas consistently, or?
Well, when I, when I made my comment earlier, I was thinking about it wrong. You, if you go to R-A-eight, you're allowing more density than R-A-six, right? You could just leave R-A-six. I mean, that, that was sort of the package of, if we're gonna go to R-ten, we were bringing everybody towards the middle. R-A-six was going to R-A-eight.
Let me see if we can get rid of O R T, and you have two houses next to each other, one's commercial, one's residential, I mean, that, that residential house, going forward, someone could argue, well, I bought it because it's O R T, and then, you know, my parents died, but I, I was gonna, you know, make it commercial as soon as that happened. I mean, we wouldn't really have a very strong case for like saying, well, you can't do that now, or, you know.
Right, well, it's, it's not a taking if they're not using it.
Currently.
Currently as a commercial. So you haven't taken anything from them.
Okay.
And they could always come back for rezoning, but I, I do think, we just all have to understand, there are gonna be those properties. I mean, there's one next to that, and one's gonna be a commercial, one's gonna be residential, and where you draw that line is a legislative decision that you're making. And it's not easy. You, you spoke about East Main Street the other night, I mean, that's what you were fighting, is once you let one, then there's gonna be more.
Right.
So.
I just, if we get into rezoning those areas, I mean, how do we, you know, create those districts where, you know, it is kind of clearly, we are establishing those lines.
Well, I mean, if they, if they re, if it's, if somebody you say, R, O R T, you're now residential, because you're using it residential, and they came back for rezoning to a commercial use, we're proposing that it would just be general commercial as the only option, you would have to decide, are we gonna let that property be the next one, or is unfortunately, that gonna be the transitional property that has to live next to it, but can't, but can't be it? That, that property, that line's gonna be somewhere. And that's where you could say, you could be commercial, but you can't be this. You can't, basically make it be office and keep it looking like a house, which is what you would probably do as a transitional, which is really what the O R T was intended to do, it just hadn't played out that way.
And also one, I guess, one other point of clarification. My understanding in the new ordinance that we were looking at, that we were not allowing for multifamily in any zoning categories, is that correct?
There were, other than what's already, we weren't talking about changing anything, it was already zoned multifamily. So there were still, I guess none left, but, except for, um, so that, yeah. I think that, what we had talked about when we first started this part of the process was that staff would basically tell people, we don't think it's gonna get approved.
Right.
Or make them come up with a property that, where we might approve it, but not just come take a speculative run at it, hoping you would do it.
Right. So under any of the new zoning classifications, would not, multifamily would not be a pre-approved part of any, any of those going forward?
No, we, we had some brief discussion about trying to identify some of those, that, that, we didn't pursue that.
Okay, just wanna make sure that the public's aware of that, so.
And I think when anyone comes in asking about the potential or the possibility that their application would get approved to multifamily or anything else, we might give our opinion, but we always say, I believe that you've got to prove your case to the elected officials. They make the ultimate decision.
Can I go ahead and move on to the topic that we're really here to discuss?
Yes, please.
Which, which is, which is the rest of the residential zoning and, and just, I guess to get everybody with new council members and all that, maybe wondering, how did we get here? Some of it was staff and, uh, my, and I, I think I may have started some of this, because I thought it was appropriate to have a default residential zoning category where people weren't having to come ask for rezoning. You could just say, we're okay if it's this big, if the lot's this big, you can just do it, which would be an encouragement to redevelop properties. That's, that's where we started. Now, and, and R-ten was just because we have so many things that are R-four, and then R-twenty, and so it was somewhere in between those two was the idea. I still think it's a good idea to have some default category, uh, where somebody could buy a piece of property, and whether that's R-twenty, R-fifteen, or R-forty, I mean, just sort of everything's that, but, you know, it does start impacting particular areas and particular properties, and I understand that. But, um, that's kind of how we got here, was with the idea that we might want to make it easier for people to redevelop certain areas of the city where older houses exist and nothing's happening. Um, and that you could get newer properties, newer houses in there, by making it a little bit easier for somebody to do that without having to come back, uh, for rezoning. So that's how we ended up where we ended up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On, on the, the, the zoning, the ten, will they, if they don't have to come back, if it's, if it's zoned that, but will they still have to come back for a conditional use permit?
For any, uh, for any variance from the setbacks, but whatever rules you put in, so, again, this default's gonna be this many per acre, this much setback, this much, you know.
Right.
And it, but if, so if you wanted any variance from that, you'd have to come back for a CUP.
Okay, but otherwise, you don't need a, a conditional use permit, you've just got a ten thousand square foot lot, that's what you get.
You got a half acre, and you can put, if you could squeeze two up in there and meet the rules, yeah.
Oh, you still have to follow the building codes and.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm talking about where the lot layout, but, but, so, so for instance, interesting to me is R-fifteen is effectively R-twenty, because you gotta have forty-five thousand square feet to make that third. Cause you gotta have forty-five thousand square feet to make that third house. Many of the properties on Main Street are about a third of an acre. Uh, it, the harder part is, is these older subdivisions with acre lots, and it's you making a legislative decision of, we're okay leaving them that way. Or, we would like to encourage redevelopment of older neighborhoods, that's, that's really the choice you're making, and then setting the size where you think appropriate. If, if, if you're happy with everything it is, as it is, we leave it as it is.
Mr. Mayor, um, from, on a case, I like a case-by-case kind of situation with that, personally, because there are a lot of houses in the city that, that, that I feel like need to be torn down, and can be utilized for two or three or four more. Now, there are a lot of options, you know, examples, moving forward with just a blanket R ten for new zone, I mean, that, that's, there, you know, it's, Canton's very hilly, and to be able to get that density, you're gonna have to do some major grading, some mass grading. And I mean, that's gonna end up affecting all your sustainability, your trees, it's just hard to find a tract of land, and I look at this every day. Cause it's, I mean, you know, for a developer's standpoint, not having to go and have it rezoned, and have ten thousand square foot lots is a great, I mean, it's a great thing. And there is a lot of property in between, on the outskirts, that can be annexed in, from Brick Mill Road, to Old Doss, all those places right there, it's a lot of land that could hold a lot of houses, and the infrastructure's not there. So I mean, again, the case-by-case thing is, is kinda what I like, because if it's, it comes before us, it's a particular piece of property, and there's a lot of property on one forty, on both sides of one forty, where Reservoir Drive comes in, all that, you know, at some point could be annexed in. Ten thousand square foot lots, and all that, that's a, and it's already a lot of traffic on one forty, that's kind of my concern. So, so I look at it from the standpoint, not only, of course, you know, historic Main Street, and downtown, and, and keeping that, but, but there are examples on Main Street, in particular, that, that I feel like could be redeveloped. So, maybe it's a case-by-case thing, you know, when it comes to a house on an acre, that's, you know, in blighted condition, that, that, you know, needs to be torn down, and you can put two, even if they're just, you know, I mean, you can't build a duplex for four hundred thousand dollars, but if we make it look like everything else on Main Street, it keeps that flow and, and kinda keeps it. So that's kinda my issue, as, as far as just the R ten, I don't want it to be a influx of developers coming in, wanting to take every twenty acre tract they have, and be able to, um, you know, put as many homes on it, where, you know, we could make them, again, just case-by-case, so we can sort of say, alright, yeah, it's R ten, but, but, you know, we've gotta have so many trees, and so, it's just kinda something that I feel like, just, just a little more thought on. And I don't know if it means getting each, each council member and mayor, getting somebody to represent them, as far as like a group, to, to study it, to, to give their opinion, their feedback. I just wanna make it right, I don't wanna do something, and then, like I said, we're, we're just, you know, encompassed with people wanting to develop annex, you know, cause, I mean, obviously, we've got the capacity now, I just wanna make sure we do it right. So.
I tell you, I mean, the, the goal is to, to get it right, and to take the time to get it right. And I think there's certainly a difference between redevelopment of, you know, existing homes and lots, and certainly agree that there are lots and homes throughout the city, you know, that could be redeveloped, and, and would service, you know, the entire community well, to, to be developed, uh, and, uh, you know, the blighted properties. But, I guess, bring up a key point, or like key difference between redeveloping those one acre lots with blighted homes now, Mr. Dyer, you mentioned, you know, spur redevelopment, uh, of, of older neighborhoods, or neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, and things like that, I mean, I think with some consideration as well. But the difference between that, or a developer coming in and doing, you know, a mass development, so what protections would be, you know, are in place, would be in place, you know, to differentiate between those, or would there be?
There wouldn't be, I mean, that's, that, that's sort of the idea, and, so, for instance, Main Street, one side of the street is R four, the other side of the street is generally R twenty. In fairness to the staff, that's not a plan, to have one side of the street be R four, and the other side be R twenty, that is not a plan.
Right.
That's just leaving it the way, that's, they zoned it for what it was, small lots on one side, bigger lots on the other side, and if that's what everybody wants, that's fine, we've lived with it, there's not real demand for any redevelopment at this point, and, but the, one side of the street's gonna be able to put four units per acre, without getting any permissions.
Right.
And ultimately, when, when I was in the meeting with residents, what I was trying to express is that, you know, a lot, there's also homeowners in that area that could subdivide their property three, four, five times, with their current zoning, and the city will have no, no input on any development out there. If the idea, at least on East Main Street and some of the older areas, is control over how things look.
Right.
You either deal with it through the zoning side, or you deal with it through historic preservation, and, and expand the historic district, and also include residential. At some point, if you're a property owner, and you own three, four, five acres, someone will buy it, or someone in your family down the line will sell it, and someone's going to figure out a way to use the property to its fullest extent of the current zoning. You know, I think originally, when we started talking about Historic Preservation Commission and, and residential, the concern was that, we had residents that didn't want the city, or, or even a committee, telling them what they could do with their property, but now they want the city to tell their neighbors what they can and can't do with their property. And so, you can't, it's, it, it definitely puts staff in a precarious situation, because, you know, it's all, it's all gonna be based upon opinion. You know, we, we, our H P C, and, and maybe, maybe, um, Ms. Anderson or Mr. Turner wants to mention on this, but they're ready to go with historic guidelines for residential. We could expand that district, we'd need to do the public hearing and all of that, and we could get everything going, so that's in place by May. That would provide some protections, as it relates to concerns about aesthetics, what things look like, how they fit in with what's in that area, building materials, setbacks, all of that, it would give a little bit more control, and oh, by the way, the board that reviews those is a board of citizens. So you may have property owners who are in that area, helping make some of those decisions, so that's a route we can go. If we change the zoning, we're still not gonna be covering some of those things, you know, and that may, I, I sense that the biggest concern is what someone might do, versus the concern of, uh, what could happen under the current zoning.
Right, right.
I just think.
And it, it just might require a longer look at it, meaning it doesn't, doesn't seem like it's the time to do this, it's based on what's, but, you know, where people are, and, uh, we now know that there's avenues to look at, the time, you know, I don't, there's not real pressure for redevelopment on Main Street, or in these older neighborhoods at this point. And maybe just a, a deeper look into all these issues about, do we wanna have a plan for the city?
Right.
Or do we, are we happy, which is, you gotta come back and ask, which is, there's nothing wrong with the approach of saying, we're, we'd prefer everybody just to have to come back and talk to us about properties, I, I see that side too, I mean, I.
I don't know that there's, there's pressure to redevelop, but if you look at property values, especially downtown, and you look at resale values, the houses on East Main Street, you see what they're selling for.
There's gonna be some areas where somebody can come buy five, six houses, and, and under R four, but.
And as Mr. Pepper.
Twenty-five units.
Mentioned, someone will figure that out, and, and to me, that's, that's the danger, that's the risk, and, you know, living in that neighborhood, I, I'm concerned about it, if we talk about losing the character of that historic, it is a national historic district neighborhood, uh, and someone who could currently put four homes on an acre. Could do that today, and that could be four very modern homes, totally out of character with what, what is currently there. To me, I have much, you know, bigger concern about that, that we could, you know, currently lose, you know, all the character there, um, under how it's currently zoned, the, the historic preservation guidelines would, would guard against that, at least in the interim. I mean, obviously, there's some issues that need, need to be addressed, you just can't, we can't, I mean, I don't think, we could choose to just keep things the way they've always been, but again, someone's gonna figure out how to do things differently, which would allow any of that scenario that I've just, just mentioned, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, but in the R four, just, just now that you've brought that up, we still would have, would we still have control, architectural control, I mean, we still, no.
Not right now.
I mean, that to me would be, you know.
Right, there's no architectural view of residential property, is there?
No.
But the setbacks and everything.
What was your question, Mr. Roach?
They still have rules, I mean, they still have development regulations.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, if we're gonna do, something needs to be put in place in certain areas, like obviously, Main Street, to try to keep the flow, I mean, I don't know how you do it, but if they're gonna build four units, the, the units need to look similar to what the rest of the, the street looks like, which I know it's still sort of kind of a hodgepodge, but you see as it's going, people are redeveloping, and there's several people that have spent a lot of money on their homes, you know, and, and it made them look, you know, they fit the area, I mean, I don't know exactly what that is, but. All that being said, at the same time, how do you tell somebody that's had a house that's zoned R four all this time, that you're changing it to, you know, R ten? I mean, then that, to me, that puts us in a precarious position, I mean, to be sued, or, or, I don't know how you do that, I mean.
Well, it's, they would, they'd be a non-conforming use, and, and you could say they'd be allowed to rebuild if it burned down, I mean.
Right.
You could protect them where it's not really a loss of value, but, and I, and I do think it's fair to say that anything that's R four is probably a quarter acre lot.
Right.
And so you're not talking about any greater density happening, there's already four houses on that.
Right.
That acre, so it's not that anybody's gonna build more houses, they'd just be newer.
Right, well, there's, you know, there's some land on Main Street still, that, you know, that, that.
On the R four side?
I guess not, I guess it would be.
When you get closer to Golf Course Road, maybe, but.
Right, that's, I guess that's basically where I'm talking from.
And I'm not sure that.
Jeanette Street on, on that, on the right hand side.
And R four doesn't go that far down, R four stops at Chrisler.
That makes me feel better.
Neither side of the Chrisler, I think.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, alright, that's.
Yeah, R four stops at Chrisler.
Yeah, there's not, there's, you can't put four houses on those lot, I mean.
Well, not, not on Main Street, I mean, I don't even know how there's one house.
That's correct.
But that was, that was one of the interesting things that happened, when, when there was the meeting with the citizens, they had no problem at all telling a property owner in the stump town area that's R four, that they need to go to R ten. And that if they wanted to redevelop, they would need to acquire a couple of parcels to do that, but they certainly didn't want an R twenty lot going to R ten, and so, I, you know, and I've expressed this to a, a few others, I think that's a dangerous position to put the city in, where you're taking from one end, but you're not willing to give on the other. And that's, that was what we were trying to do in an approach, where there was kind of a baseline residential, is that it was a compromise of what was existing out there, and it was based upon an average lot size that we had citywide.
And I, I'm certainly not advocating that we go to what was proposed, uh, I'm concerned about what could happen today, given the current state of what we have, so.
So that would, that would be addressing, making sure you control how it looks, that's what you're talking about, again, cause I don't think you're getting greater density.
Well, that, that, knowing that it stops at Chrisler, that makes me feel better, because I was, my, my concern was taking a five acre tract and putting, you know, twenty something, that, that was, that's, I'm, I'm.
It, it is pretty much lots that are already a quarter of acre size or less.
But we do have some lots, I think, closer to golf courses.
Well, that's, but they're R twenty.
Yeah, R twenty, right, that's right, sorry, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Allen.
Well, if, no matter what we do, some clever somebody out there is gonna figure a way to game the system, so you, you can't really worry too much about that, other than put as many protections in place as you can. My feeling is, I have no problem with simplifying, and doing away with all these zones that most people don't understand, uh, but my feeling is, if you're going to choose one as the default, you should go with whatever's the lowest allowed density, instead of the highest allowed density, and then make everybody that wants to do different come see you. That's just my opinion on that, and I understand that's probably got some issues with it also, but that's, I'd just like to see us lean more in that direction. And, I think that's a fair point, but if you make it, if you make everything R forty, you have effectively, uh, made it most of the city non-conforming, so you can't go R forty, can't go to the most allowed, which leaves you with R twenty. I mean, if you, if you were to say, R twenty's gonna be our default, you know, then you got all the R forty subdivisions actually being rezoned, uh, and most of the other, rest of, the downtown's not, so, it's, it's very difficult, I mean, it was just an attempt to, to have a plan, uh, and it may just be that downtown is what it is, and. Until you're talking about master planning things, uh, there's only so much that can happen anyway. So you might have to have some kind of overlay on things, if you're talking about particular areas, we could overlay on top of R four zoning, and put some rules in place, as Mr. Roach was, was mentioning, that, that's a possibility. But that, that would just require, I think, a lot of citizen input, and, uh, seeing if there's any kind of consensus out there about how a particular area could redevelop, and do we wanna go ahead and put things in place to protect and also encourage?
Well, I mean, I do believe, you know, downtown is very unique, it is, as far as I know, the only national historic district neighborhood residential in the city. You know, it, it, it abuts, you know, central business district, I mean, there are a lot of things that make it unique, the topography also, I mean, there, I mean, I could see, you know, an overlay, and a redevelopment, you know, plan, you know, because of all of those things. You know, that makes sense to me, but also, on the other hand, too, I mean, I know we had most input from, from downtown residents, but it's not the only older neighborhood in town as well, so I don't wanna lose sight of that, um, and, and forget those residents as, as well, that, that, and those older neighborhoods that could use redevelopment as, as well, uh, but, I think that being said, there are some, um, there are certain things that make downtown different, I think, and, and, uh. And it's hard to, while you have to have the zoning map and ordinances in place for planning, and all the things you have to have illegally in place for, you know, it's, it's certainly not a one-size-fits-all scenario.
No, there's not, and, and I think that's kinda where we are, the, the other thing that led to this effort was, many years ago, five, six, seven years ago, to, to reduce the number of zoning categories, and that's a, sounded like a great idea, but now we're running into what that really means. And in the residential, that may not make sense, that things perhaps need to be zoned differently, because what they are, and where, and, and they're the current, uh, stock of what's out there, but that, that was also some pressure, I think, on staff, I think, certain members of the staff have been thinking about this for a while, because there was a real, uh, interest in streamlining the zoning categories, and, uh, you know, I, I'm just sort of now thinking, well, okay, we can't, you know, there's, at this point, may just be too, too difficult to do that. What that means is, somebody's got to come get rezoned, so it's not the end of the world. What that means is, somebody's got to come get rezoned, so it's not the end of the world. And, and when, when you think about it in certain, the older neighborhoods, nothing's gonna happen until somebody thinks it's worth buying five, six, seven, eight houses. And if they think it's worth doing that, they'll come for rezoning, right? So you're not precluding it necessarily by doing that. I, I just think it's probably leave it alone and further study, if we want to, area by area, look at some overlays. Is that, I mean, those make sense, don't they, Kevin? Like Sunnyside could have a plan different from, uh, Etowah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing, I mean, I don't want to end up having overlays all over the place. But kind of as you mentioned, putting some overlays to R four, so that we don't kind of have the look and style like we're talking about, maybe you want to have. On, on the other end, if we're looking at areas, trying to make it easier to streamline redevelopment, we could look at doing a district that would, maybe there's some R twenties, some R ten, whatever it is, some areas that say this, this needs some rehab, this needs some redevelopment, we could look at an overlay there that would help streamline or maybe make it a little quicker. Still come here, maybe find a way to shorten or encourage, um, and kind of go piece by piece where development, redevelopment is needed instead of blanket for the city. And then, um, as we mentioned a few times, looking at doing residential guidelines for the historic district and expanding that district so that you would still have kind of stylistically the look and certain areas would keep the larger setbacks and the inline from the road to keep the current character. So there's, there's different options. You, you don't want to end up with, here's our zoning map, but then also here's our secondary where everything has to overlay over it. But, you know, two or three, something like that, um, that gave some clear guidance, I, I think could work well.
Well, I know one of the reasons, you know, uh, we wanted to, to delay any decision back in December was because Mr. Turner had, had just joined our team and we wanted to, to tap into his knowledge and expertise. I think some of the things you're mentioning makes sense, but I know that there was also reasons we had some things we wanted to clean up on our zoning map and, and some things Mr. Green mentioned earlier that has nothing to do with the residential zoning. So I think, you know, those things, what needs to be done now, you know, that can be done now, that don't really, you know, impact the residential zone. But, you know, verbiage and things that need to be cleaned up, what's the housekeeping things that need to be done, separating those and the work that's been done, there's a lot of great work that's been done and thanks to everyone who's worked on that. But, uh, move forward with those changes and then decide how to move forward with, you know, on residential side. I mean, don't want to lose all the great work that's been done and, and thought. And also don't want to say, well, it's hard and it's, you know, it's too hard, we're not gonna do it. I mean, I think that's just kind of a cop out, but.
Well, and I think the first, and I'm talking way more than I want to, but the, um, first thing is just, do, do we feel the need to have plans for areas or for the whole city or any? If, if you as a body think, I don't know what the plan would be, but, but, you know, that's fine too. It was just an effort from the staff to sort of say, you know, let's, let's have some plan for the future that we can live with. And so if, if it's area by area, like Mr. Turner was saying, or it's just, you know what, we don't feel the pressure to do that right now. That's fine too.
Well, Mr. Turner's talking about area by area and, you know, one of our tenants is creating great neighborhoods and that, those, you know, live side by side and that, I think it's something we can get into more philosophically, maybe in our retreat. We should, we should talk about that and, you know, taking a case by case basis. I understand, well, that technically works. I don't know that that's the best approach for creating neighborhoods, but I mean, we can, we can talk about that, but I think, you know, we do need to clean up the things that are, you know, obviously broken, you know, in, in the code and things like that.
And, and so if you do case by case, the only downside to case by case is the first one comes and you say, well, we don't really like that. But we don't know what we want. Then, then you're, you're not really giving anybody any guidance about what they can do with their property. And so thinking about it ahead of time, to me, sounds like a good idea. And I, I know the staff, you know, professional staff, that, they want to do that, because that's what they know how to do. And, um, but this, the R ten wasn't the answer. I mean, that's pretty clear. So, uh, we need to look at other questions and other answers.
Okay. Mr. Allen, say.
Yeah, I just, uh, as it relates to, you know, kind of making changes or not making changes and what we might want to look at, I've met with Mr. Turner this morning and it occurred to me, you know, here's a, here's a person that has over twenty years' experience in zoning. Ms. Anderson has a ton of experience in zoning. Mr. Green has a ton of experience in zoning. And I know they've been working in concert with, with Mr. Peppers and, and Bobby to try to help distill some of, some of the thoughts into, into, you know, some recommendations. But I, I'm very strongly feeling that, you know, we, we, to your point, Mayor, we need to lean on, uh, this experience. And, um, I don't, I certainly don't have all the answers. People in here are a lot smarter than I am, but I would, I'd feel very comfortable leaning on the experience of these guys and making recommendations and also keeping a keen eye on, you know, where the, where the potential landmines. Where might we fall down? Where might we, you know, um, have a bump in the road that we didn't think about? And take a little bit more time. I mean, I'm, we've been talking about zoning for a couple of years now. And now we've got, you know, some, some plans that were presented. We had citizen input. I'm, I'm glad we did. Because it really, it opened our eyes relative to, you know, what people didn't want. But, you know, we have areas of town like the, the Old Mill Village number two, Sunnyside we've talked about, um, the south side of East Main Street. These are all neighborhoods that are opportunities for redevelopment. I would just like to get it, get it right, but, um, I'm certainly not the one to make, I mean, I'll certainly make a decision, but not, not to, to, to have the experience to make the proper decisions based on all the facts. So that, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I, I agree. The, I think the only time limitation we have is, you know, the time to get it right. And I think moving forward with everyone's input, like I say, we need to, I think we need to determine in the, the original recommendation, you know, things you know, the housekeeping, they need to be done, that needs to be done. And, uh, Mr. Green and Mr. Peppers, Mr. Dyer, if you guys want to come back and say, these are the things that can be acted on now that need to be cleaned up, you know, and any zoning map, you know, errors or things that, that need to be fixed immediately, we can get those done. We can discuss then in our retreat how we want to, to move forward as a body and, and, you know, continue to get residence input as well in the process, but let's do it in a structured way and a thoughtful way and.
And one thing you may want to consider is, you know, we had always said with the Historic Preservation Commission that if they, if they were gonna leap into residential, that they would have a public hearing.
Yeah, I, I believe we should have that.
If, if council gives a nod, HPC can have a public hearing at their first meeting in, at, at a meeting in March. So that at least there could be an opportunity for the residential area that's impacted there to give feedback on they would like it, they wouldn't like it, here's what they would like to see, or here's what they would not like to see. So that at least that group's not in a holding pattern like they've been in for the last year or two or three. Trying to figure out how they can help in a situation that they've been told to stand down on.
Right, yeah. And just add on that, we, um, you know, Brittany's done a lot of work and HPC's done a lot of work over the last year on the guidelines. We added a few more edits. We discussed it at the last meeting. Monday, we're gonna kind of go over the final few edits and tentative timeline, if, if this is something they want to see and y'all want to see would, um, you know, have a kind of a work session like this, open house for the public before their meeting in March, kind of explain what we're doing and then they can, um, vote to recommend and adopt the guidelines and then expansion, because we have to expand the district. That itself would be, you know, an open house, public hearing type, and then it would get to y'all sometime in April to do a, a public hearing on actually expanding and then the guidelines in there. So, um, you know, in that sense, we can do it relatively quick, a couple of months, but also it's, it's still long enough that we can reach out to everyone, reach out to anyone who'd be affected in the district, work with communications to make sure everyone is, you know, notified. And we'd be able to come in for input and, and know about it, so.
I mean, I personally think it's a great idea, just, just so we have, you know, communicated about and, and, you know, have the input. Also, just talk about some things that we've talked about today, that, you know, what the current, you know, uh, situation could be, you know, what, what current, you know, zone, you know, what's currently in, in danger, you know, with, with the current situation and how this may help protect the character, you know, of the downtown residential district. And why, why it's important or why it should at least be considered, at least discussed, so.
And, and similarly, I mean, not to put more work on, on staff of the city, but you can have more than one district. That, that second Mill Village could be a district. Everything that's in there is contributing and it's mostly contributing and it's of the age where if you did want to do that and you wanted to put some guidelines on it, it does open up tax credits for property owners that want to do his rehabs and, and, you know, it might be what could spur on good redevelopment in that area.
Right. It's, it's not uncommon in larger historic, and this would be a, a larger one to have kind of subareas that would have unique standards and guidelines underneath each, so it wouldn't even be a wholesale. But we could get a little more specific where we want. Even allow more density where we want, keep it larger setbacks where we want. Offer design focused, which would give guidance to people looking to redevelop or to keep things not developed. And keep it where, the way people have it now and they like it. And that, that can be done within the district itself, as like a subarea concentration.
Sounds good to me.
So for purposes of the ordinance we have before us, what I'm sort of gathering is we want to just eliminate the residential part at this point, so we could, the only thing we have left to do is, is look at the ORT conversion and that will be part of the MAP amendment when we adopt the map.
Sound good, everyone?
So we should be able to do that in March?
Okay.
Well, we, we, we don't, do we, we don't have to have another public hearing. We already had a public hearing on it. Well, that's up to them, but if we're, if, assuming we're taking the residential out, I don't think there was a comment about any of the other things. We can, we'll talk about that, but timing.
You guys talk about it, but I think if we're revising it, we actually vote on a different. I would actually let's talk about it, but I, I don't think, I don't think a public hearing would hurt, just for clarification.
Well, the issue is with the, the ORT properties and whether you feel the need to notify them, those owners in particular, that you are changing their zoning, give them an opportunity to come.
And we could do the same thing with the, in, with the neighborhood commercial.
And see, so we could have a public hearing for the purpose of those people to come in and say, don't change mine and here's why and.
Right.
Or, or give me commercial rather than residential and, and let you deal with them case by case.
I just don't want anyone to accuse us of trying to push things through without notifying them, so.
Well, nobody likes MAP amendments that change their zoning. I think giving them notice is probably a good idea. Whether you do that through a public hearing or not, you know, it's up to you, but it sounds like y'all have a problem with doing another public hearing, so.
Public hearing's always a good thing, so.
So that would.
Whether we like them or not, so.
That could be a public hearing about the, the MAP change, where we, we actually notify the people who are impacted.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that agenda item? I think you have one on your input on that matter. I believe the next item was a conversation on planning for the spring retreat.
Council has historically had a retreat in the, of March. We've gone into late February before. You know, I since we have new members of the council, we've always been pretty flexible on when that's been. Normally what I would do is, is send out an email and say, here's, here's a couple of windows of dates. And then get feedback from you. So it might be a situation where, you know, depending on the feedback, we've done retreats on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We've done them on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, middle of the week. We've, we've shuffled them around based upon availability of council members. One of the questions I would have for you to be thinking about is, where would you like to have a retreat? We've done them in places so that we could go see something. So for instance, we've been to Colossus for retreat before. The idea was to see how they utilize trail along the river, how they finance that particular project. We did a retreat in Chattanooga. While we were there, we looked at incubative space. We looked at, you know, their activation of the river. Same thing in Greenville. We've been to Athens for retreats. We've been to Brass Town Valley Resort for retreats. You know, if, if for example, um, one of the projects we're looking at is hotel conference space on the, um, on the reservoir, maybe we find something that's been built recently that can help us think about that. Or if there's a particular type of project you would like to look at, we can, we can try to find a location based on that. But it's gonna take a lot of feedback from you to help us get that done. March is also, you know, pretty close now since we're in February, which means that there's some logistics that go into it from our point of view. If we need to push it back into April, that's fine too. But historically, the council has retreated twice a year. Usually the one in the spring is helping inform staff of things that are priorities that you might have as a group when it gets into the budget season. And usually the one in the fall is more about specific projects that are, that are ongoing and project updates from staff and, and getting ready for the next calendar year, so. Any ideas that you may have? Please let me know.
Yes, Mr. Warner.
I don't necessarily have a preference on where we go, but the when. If we have given, I think it was ninety days for this, the abeyance, I'd like to have our retreat prior to that. You know, obviously, it's, it's a point of discussion. That's one thing that I think I'd like to spend some time, we spent time in the last two retreats, I think, talking about this, but if we've got a deadline coming up, I'd like preferably to have it before March is over.
And so one of the questions I would have for council is, if, if we move forward on the ordinance changes with everything except for the residential with the ORT, is there anything still hanging out there that would make you want to continue with the abeyance? Or are you basically saying at that point, we've wrapped up everything that we had discussed and the abeyance will basically sunset itself at the end of March?
I mean, there's no purpose for it at that point, because you're just saying the existing zoning is gonna stay the same, so.
Or do we end it early? But af, I'm sorry, after further analysis, so if staff comes, then comes back to us and says, nah, we've considered that and we actually want to make this change and that change, what, what is that?
I don't, I don't anticipate anything on the R ten part of it. So, uh, 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 nobody has an idea right now. It, it's gonna require some thought. They were talking about in the future, thinking through it again, right? So I, I think from staff's point of view, we're ready to go. Just adopt the ordinance, no residential changes in the abeyance and, and get going on the planning or thinking through that you want to do.
Yeah.
Is that, is that something we can do prior to the end of March? I mean, can we?
Yeah, well, the only, we could do it at the next meeting, but except the MAP changes for OR, ORT.
Okay.
That, I think they won't, we would, it sounds like we want to have a public hearing and notify those people, hey, you're going to residential, you're going, and, and give them an opportunity to weigh in on that.
You could narrow it down to only include parcels that are ORT or, or neighborhood commercial for rezoning application.
What do you think the ORT, we could, could that, get that accomplished by the end of March?
Well, I mean, if, if that felt rushed to you, we could continue the abeyance, Mr. Peppers just said, in Act One, for ORT properties and give you time to give people notice and, and come in and.
I mean, ultimately, today's the first day of February, so you're only gonna have one application cycle, March first, that's gonna be impacted at all, if you don't end the abeyance early.
Well, let's, I think, since we just had this discussion today, let's look at this and discuss the art, the ORT, and look at that schedule, and just see how things line up. And, I mean, we can lift the abeyance, you know, at, at any point, but let's just see. I don't want to complicate matters any more than we've already done, so, but just see what makes sense. So also make sure we just send a consistent message, just out there to everyone, but so everyone kind of knows dates wise or whatever, so. But I think, you know, even if we're not, you know, going to do anything residential now, we still want to have the conversation at the retreat, and, you know, what do we want to do going forward? What are, are we gonna be looking at? I mean, it doesn't mean that we're gonna be acting anytime soon, but how do we want to proceed, and what? But, I think not giving us, ourselves a timeframe, you know, is certainly not, I wouldn't imagine that council would elect to keep the abeyance and, you know, for, you know, perpetual period of time until we make any decisions, so. I think it's a good, certainly, something considered there, so.
And then additionally, if there's any specific topics that you would want to look at as part of the retreat, if you'll let me know those, so we can try to think through the schedule. And like I said, if it's a topic that's based on the location, or something you'd like to see or learn that another community's done, that might help inform a tour of something while we're there, or having a guest speaker from that community tell us about how they did something X, Y, or Z, as an option.
So can we go ahead and agree then on, on, do we want to, do we want to, for instance, visit a city that has a fairly new hotel conference center? Or, or we want to visit this city? Can we go ahead and kind of nail that down? Because it sounds like time is of the essence.
I think.
Well, I don't think we can do that today.
Yeah. If you have any ideas, send them to Mr. Peppers and I, then, and we may talk too. And again, we can send out some thoughts if we have any, or whatever, we'll, we'll start some email correspondence. I think trying to find a date that works for everyone is the first step, and then, once we've gotten a date, finding a, a location that can accommodate this as well, so.
So if, if, for example, you had two or three different ideas of things that you wanted to look at or talk about, what we would do is, we would get a date selected first, and then Donna Bell will work on trying to find a location that can accommodate what it is that we're looking to see based upon that date. Maybe that we can't see it in the spring, that's something that we need to see in the fall, and that's fine, too.
And one thing we will do, for new council members, is that we'll go through the roadmap and go through everything that's been accomplished where we are on that, and report that back to everyone, and so we can kind of go through those goals, objectives, and where we are. Okay. Anything else? Well, if not, that's all we have on the agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn until our council meeting at six P M.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion's second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.